Good evening, everyone. We're going to start this subcommittee conference. The following subject matter will be discussed to discuss the ARPA process and provide guidance and feedback. Over here on the main priorities. The clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Cooper, absent. Councilor Teneri Garcia.
Present.
Councilor Robertson.
Here.
Councilor Taylor.
Here.
Councilor Lopez.
Here.
Councilor Melinda Vega Maldonado. Nope. Councilor Abadina.
Here.
Councilor Brown.
Here.
Councilor Vito. Councilor De Jesus. And Councilor Judith Garcia.
Present.
One, two, three, four, five, seven members present have a call, Mr. Taylor.
Excellent. At this time, as we'll also note, who were invited to attend? For the record, Councilor Melinda Vega Maldonado is here. The all members of the Chelsea City Council, the city manager Tom Ambrosino, Housing and Community Development Director Alex Train, ARPA Community Advisor Committee, and members of the public. So I'll allow the city manager just to start off in opening things up and then continue down with Alex and the group making their presentation.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I'll turn it over to Alex relatively quickly, but just to give everyone an overview and a recap. So as you know, we've received $40 million from the American Rescue Plan Act. And that money came in, is allowed to be expended in some different buckets. But one of the things ARPA was intended, one of the buckets is lost revenue. So a large chunk of that $40 million is intended to reimburse the city for lost revenues, the amount of money that we lost, mostly in tax dollars as a result of the impacts of COVID. And so ARPA is intended to help cities and towns recover lost revenues for a four-year period. So each year, we're intended to measure what our lost revenues were, and that whole chunk of money then can be spent by the city on just pure government services. So in the case of Chelsea, thus far, we have only calculated the first year of lost revenue. And in that one year of lost revenue, our outside auditors estimated the city lost approximately $10 million in just the first year of ARPA. We have not yet calculated the second year of lost revenue. That is one of the things on the auditor's list of things to do in the next month or so, calculate the second year of lost revenue through December 31st, 2021. I'd be surprised if we didn't have a similar level of lost revenue. So over the first, over the four years, our lost revenue is going to well exceed $25 million. But I set aside $25 million as sort of just a benchmark for lost revenue. And that amount of lost revenue, the city is going to utilize in doing basic city services like mostly, bless you, capital improvement projects. And you will see in the capital improvement plan that's before you, a big chunk of money in there for project is based on ARPA funding. I think in FY '23 alone, I've got projects totaling over $12 million with ARPA funding. In the out years, there's another six-plus million. I expect we'll be spending somewhere in the $20-plus million of this lost revenue category in capital projects, and some of the balance will be on some more public health-related government spending. That's left $15 million to sort of address the lingering social impacts of COVID, the impacts on housing and food insecurity and behavioral health. And for that $15 million sort of part of the $40, we set up a ARPA Community Advisory Committee, a committee of residents, including two resident city councilors, to help the community decide how best to spend that $15 million. And that is what this advisory committee has been deliberating on for about the past six or seven months. Two members of this council, members of that committee, there's another 18 members, nine of whom are leaders of some of the major social service nonprofits in the city. The other nine are just residents from very, you know, residents who represent different interests. So there's a small business owner, there's a restaurant owner, they're people of that nature. And so that group has been meeting, and one of the things we wanted to do is gather more input from the general public. And so there was this large public meeting that many of you attended last week where the general public got to weigh in on the committee's deliberations thus far. And tonight is the opportunity for the council to kind of weigh in on what they think about the priorities that the committee has thus far tentatively identified as priorities where they would like to spend money. I know the committee is anxiously awaiting to get feedback, both from the general public, which is currently being tabulated, and from the council as to what the council thinks about the priorities that so far the committee has identified as places where they would like to spend money in these various categories where ARPA allows you to spend money. So that's sort of the backdrop for tonight, which is a presentation to you about where the committee is at this moment in time and feedback from the council about what it thinks of the priorities that have thus far been identified. Are there some gaps? Are there things where more attention has to be paid? It's that kind of feedback that the committee is looking for. And again, the council on its own has its own input into the committee with its two members who sit on the committee and will vote on the expenditures. But tonight gives the opportunity for the whole council to weigh in on these tentative priorities. So with that as backdrop, I'm not quite sure who's taking over here. Is it, it's Mo? Okay. So I'm going to let Mo take it from here. Mo has been facilitating the, at the request of the city, Mo has been hired as the facilitator for the ARPA process and can walk the council through where the committee is at. So.
Great. Thank you, Tom. Just give us a little background about yourself.
Absolutely. Thank you, Tom. Great to be before you. My name is Mo Barboza. I serve as Senior Director of Community Engagement at Health Resources in Action. We're a public health, social change organization based in Boston. We've worked in and with folks in Chelsea for a long time, so it was our pleasure and privilege to play this formative role in the facilitation of the committee and gathering the information and putting it before the committee for its deliberation. So I'm going to ask if we go to the first slide. Just wanted to remind the committee that this has been a really transparent process, so the videos of all of the meetings have been online and you're able to find it at chelsea.gov/arp. The PowerPoints from every meeting are there, so the information's been widely shared and available to not only you, the committee, but to the public. There was a review of the secondary data, so the, you know, what did all the health department things say, all the data that's out there in the world say about these issues in Chelsea, but then also really using this time with the committee to review, what did the primary sources, what did the people in Chelsea really say? And we did that through focus groups, through community-based organization meetings, community meetings, through key informant interviews. We came to the subcommittee of this body as well. We also did a community survey. And lastly, the public meeting last week that was wildly successful with nearly 300 people and lots of input. And so the committee has been deliberating and prioritizing strategies throughout this process. We're in the home stretch, as the city manager related, so we are going to be reviewing the results from the public meeting and any of the comments that you all are putting forward here tonight into a final prioritization of the strategies and then an allocation of the, a recommendation on the allocation of the dollars. Any questions so far? Great. So what I'll do next is just give you a chance to take a look at, under each of the six categories, what are the strategies we've been looking at? And they are in the order that they have been prioritized to date. So this is the order that the committee has prioritized them to date, and then we'll be taking in and reconsidering these with the input from the public meeting and your input tonight. So the first box is small business. You'll see we've got seven strategies there. I'm not going to bore you with reading through them all, but I will give you a moment to take a look and then see if you have any questions or comments.
I should just want to add a question.
Yes.
So what you're presenting to us right now is in the order of priorities. So are you saying that small businesses are a number one priority?
So thank you for that. That's a good question. These are just the category, the categories are not in any order. The strategies within the category are in prioritized order.
Thank you.
No, no problem. Great question. Any questions on the small business? And I'll just give you, for a little bit of background, we were able to speak directly with small business owners with a focus group that was dedicated to small business, including the Chamber of Commerce. We had small business members on the committee itself, so we've had some good input there. Yes, sir?
Just as it's going to be to either Tom or to Alex, when there is a, the number one, when you, when you, when they state, create an asset-strong go-to option at the city of Chelsea and be able to give financial guidance on policy and other issues affecting businesses, what might that look like if in fact it's put in place?
Good question. So based upon the input that we've heard from the committee, many committee members, as well as participants in the focus groups, are looking for a central hub that small business owners and entrepreneurs can come to at City Hall to receive that type of business advice, technical assistance, and ongoing support. So that could look like a dedicated staff position that specializes exclusively in small business development. That could also look like a resource center where, instead of having one particular dedicated staff person, you have multiple staff that all work in different areas that commit a certain amount of time each week to that resource center. But the key is to have a predictable, welcoming, inclusive place for business owners and entrepreneurs to come and seek counsel and guidance free of charge or at a low cost to help them out in whatever business endeavors that they're doing.
So this person, or this position, or whatever you want to call it, as a resource would also be possibly guide a business owner to go through City Hall with all the permitting process and such? Would that be part of the job?
Exactly. And I could picture them also guiding business owners through the relevant state and federal permitting, loan application and financing processes, given how cumbersome those can be as well.
Okay. And number three, support at-home daycares of small businesses, access to traditional and other programs. What does that look like?
So based upon the input that we heard at many of the small business focus groups, as well as through the committee, there are a lot of entrepreneurs in the city that are operating childcare services. They may not be formally licensed, so that would look like assisting those entities in obtaining their licenses at the state, ensuring that they operate in compliance with all laws, and providing ongoing technical assistance, whether it's with budgeting, business planning, or locating space.
But that sort of support would just be for those that are in the daycare business?
That type of direct business support was called out by the committee for those that are in the direct daycare business. But one of the themes we heard during the workforce development sessions was that all employers and a lot of working households right now are hampered by the lack of affordable childcare. So as you can see in some of these priorities, childcare is a recurring theme, where increasing childcare subsidies, adding the number of childcare seats, and making childcare more accessible is really vital for working families so they can get back to work. And it's also vital for businesses because they have a tough time recruiting when the staff that are, you know, in their workplace can't have childcare to cover their family obligations while they can get to work.
Could you see number three and two being the same, where, why you're specifically identifying small business daycare versus saying if you are also training small businesses, whether it be, you know, the legality of getting the licensing in order to do that? Or is this, again, is it doing the same, or you're creating two different positions or looking at creating two different positions there, or support?
I would say one position that does both. The key with number two is that there would be this ongoing level of centralized support for all types of businesses, regardless of whether they're a restaurant or an entrepreneur that wants to print and sell T-shirts online from his house. The key with the childcare piece is just how much attention and resources are paid to that particular sector. So there were a couple of other sectors that have been highlighted through the focus groups and the committee deliberations to date, childcare being the main one, but also, you know, restaurants and merchants.
Any other questions? Councilor Brown?
Yeah, so thank you. I gotta, I kind of agree with some of the stuff just on this. I was at the meeting and Mr. Barboza started and get to say hello last week at the event. I saw you there with your Steelers. But one of the things I had, questions that I had when I was looking at this here, particular slide we have on, is some of these stores, well, not some, but there's quite a few stores that's already have, because of the pandemic, and have been hit so hard and not been able to keep up with their responsibility. They've closed, or, and there's others that's on dire need of getting ready to close. Do we have any programs that we can assist these folks? And these are folks that did not get any help in the prior round of giving money to small businesses. So I know moving forward, we want to be able to create an atmosphere where all businesses, all small businesses can come before us. My question is, how can we reach out? And nothing there shows me where we can reach out and help these people get back up and running.
So that's a great question, and I think an excellent idea that's closely aligned with the intention behind the ARPA regulations. So one of the major driving goals of the ARPA regulations from the Biden administration's side is that they assist disproportionately impacted residents and small businesses. So priority number four over here, that talks about direct cash infusions, you know, that could be structured in such a way that there is direct operating capital made available to just those type of businesses you're mentioning. We could set policies where either businesses that did not receive previous funding are heavily prioritized, or the funding could only be open to those that have not received any past assistance. That's all within the purview of the city and the city council. I think it's a matter of programmatic design. But we could absolutely have a direct financial assistance or a technical assistance program that prioritizes those businesses that have been disparately affected by the pandemic.
Okay. So this here diagram gives us ideas. What's the, how do the business community have to apply? What's the definition? Do they have to have license? Like I heard you speak about someone in a, making shirts from their home. Do they have to have anything that indicates that they are a business?
So for ARPA, there are special regulations that we have to apply, and then there are local policies that we would look to apply. So ARPA has income limits. In the case of Chelsea, though, we're all encompassed by what's called a qualified census tract, so therefore, the entire city is a place where eligible uses of ARPA funds can be put to work. So there's no restriction on whether we are assisting a brick-and-mortar business or a business that's operated out of someone's homes. Generally, our local policies are to ensure that they are in good standing with the city so the businesses don't owe any outstanding taxes or fees, they're not subject to any legal action, or have a history of any workplace violations. So we'd look to create those types of reasonable policies, but to make it exceedingly accessible to startups, people that are in their homes trying to start their business for the first time. Because I think the last thing we want to do is create 100 hoops for people to jump through and make it not worth their while in order to access the assistance.
Okay. So that's good. So that mean they, these folks would have some kind of, some kind of license or something granted through the city. And the same thing I was going to piggyback with is the daycare. You said to help the daycare owners that may not be registered, but they would be registered here and not registered as a state agency? I'm not sure what you were trying to say.
So it depends on the business. So I think what I'm trying to say is that...
This is directly with a baby daycare center, because you mentioned that one.
Right. So there's no restrictions on ARPA funding as to the use. So for instance, with past grant programs, those grant programs mandated that we could only serve businesses that have a brick-and-mortar location. With ARPA, it's much more flexible. We can serve home-based businesses as well as brick-and-mortar businesses, regardless of their sectors, as long as we can demonstrate that they've been disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. The rest of it is sort of up to the city to develop local policies and procedures for how we operate these programs.
How do we, how do we identify that they've been, you know, impacted, negatively impacted by the pandemic if they're not licensed?
So an easy way that we've worked on with businesses is to look at their sort of profit and loss over the last two years, and you can have them report this on an application. You know, please certify the amount of revenue you brought in as well as your total expenses. You can also ask for backup documentation, whether it's, you know, copies of their financials or what have you. But with that, we can at least document the loss that the businesses have incurred, so we know that we're not providing funding in excess of what they lost, but a reasonable amount of funding that helps mitigate that loss.
I'm, I'm okay with that, Mr. President, but that's what some of the folks want to know, is that are we giving folks, you know, this helping hand with this? Because I talked to Tom, there's a lot of great things we can do, but we want to make sure that folks that really need this, that's really been impacted and don't have any of those documents that you spoke of, barber shops, hair salon, they don't keep up with a lot of those records and stuff, but they still have a business where you can walk by and see it, and you've seen it for the last five years. We realize that's a business, but someone that has something in their house and say, you know, I lost $10,000 because I'm running a radio show, or because I'm doing such a thing, and we've never seen this business, probably never heard it, but I just want us to be careful how we support and prioritize these things. Thank you.
Councilor Garcia?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I know that I'm mindful of time, and I know that you're not even halfway done through your, through your presentation, but I guess a few questions for you. How many local business owners were part of this conversation?
So in total, so there are two, three local business owners on the ARPA Advisory Committee. Then Mo pulled together focus groups with around, I would say, eight to 10 folks participating that were representing businesses, and then community leader interviews. I think we did maybe one or two direct interviews with business owners.
Okay. Great. So I love some of the ideas that are presented here. I think Councilor Abadina alluded to this. I feel like numbers three and six could be grouped together because it's basically the same subject, which is childcare. I know that number two expands on it a little bit more. Quick one, direct cash infusion to support small businesses. Direct cash for what?
So when the committee was discussing that, they were envisioning that more as grants for operational purposes, so operating capital like rent, utilities, payroll, and inventory, just to ensure that businesses can continue operating as the economy recovers.
Business owners with mixed immigration statuses, can they also benefit for this?
So that is our understanding right now, that there's no immigration requirement attached to this funding. Now, I'll caution everyone by saying that the regulations that the feds released are new. That's our current understanding of the regulations. The state could always issue contrary regulations, but we're operating under the belief that there's no immigration requirement for these funds.
So if the funding is ours, and potentially, let's say, we have $15 million in our hands, who are the creators of these applications and requirements? Is it the federal government, or is it the city?
It would be the city, but there would be federal regulations that we would have to adhere to relative to financial management, record-keeping, and grant management.
Wonderful. My last question is on point number five. So fun fact is, I have a great relationship with district, with my district's business owners, and the idea of reducing the liquor license to 50% was actually something that I proposed and was something that was given to me directly from a business owner, so shout out to the owners of the Juana Restaurant. If this is something that you're pondering on, is it, do we need to use the funds that are here, or can we just waive those fees? Explain to me, what are your thoughts behind that, behind the reducing costs, additional costs with under-licensing and permitting?
So this isn't going to be a straightforward answer, but I think it depends on the permit and license. So according to our administrative ordinance, you know, the city has the authority to waive certain license and permit fees. However, other license and permits, particularly ones that are tied to state processes, can't necessarily be waived. So a good example of that would be the liquor license fee a restaurant has to pay at the alcoholic beverage commission. Those are ones that we don't have power to waive. But I totally agree with you that if, you know, we were to try to reduce these startup costs and lower barriers, one strategy as opposed to tapping the funds would be to lower the fees where we had the jurisdiction to do so.
Perfect. So if we lower the fee, then we would pony up that money from this fund. Wonderful. That's it on my end. Thank you.
Councilor Taylor?
I just have one quick question, and that is, what kind of statistics do we have? What kind of actual data do we have regarding businesses that are in trouble or are in need, or, I mean, how do we even know what the need really is? That's really my question.
So we do have quite a bit of economic data that we were able to gather as part of the data collection and analysis process at the beginning of the committee meetings. As the committee sort of progressed, they would ask for other data points relative to the economy, housing, demographics. But right now, we don't have a perfect sense of exactly what the need is in the business community. I'll be blunt, we don't have a quantified need. You know, if I were to stand up here and say, it's $20 million versus $10 million, you know, those data points don't exist. We've done a lot of surveying of businesses, so we're able to capture, you know, points in time based upon a couple hundred respondents. So we understand that, you know, the majority of businesses had to lay, you know, more than 25% of their employees off during the pandemic. And I can share with you sort of what we presented to the committee that shows the number of businesses that have closed and the impacts during the pandemic. What we don't have a good grasp on right now quantifiably is sort of how those businesses are recovering, since they only relay limited data to the state, and they don't relay that much data at all to the city. So we survey businesses periodically, and we have to rely on that survey data for a lack of better sources.
So I guess my point is, is that having money allocated to all this is all well and good, but we really need to know what we're doing in order to be effective. So, you know, I think, I think having somebody that knows how to mine data from, from both state and federal agencies, that, you know, economic indicators and, and, you know, how many bankruptcies were filed, or how many, you know, it, it just kind of, I think you need to do some of that homework in order to really try to target or pinpoint how much money goes where, or else you're just kind of guessing and you're kind of just throwing it out there. So, you know, I, I don't, you know, I don't mean to really be a stickler, but it, it just, it just seems to me that if we're going to spend millions of dollars trying to help people, that we really should try to invest some of that money into finding out exactly where we're at and what needs to be done, and who, and who needs to be helped. You know, because they may not know enough, you know, to come forward and say, hey, I need help, or they don't know that anybody's willing to help them, or whatever it is. You know, they're just, they feel alone and, you know, they're, they're struggling just to keep their head above water. So, you know, that's, that's my only comment. Thank you.
Absolutely. So those publicly accessible sources from the state and the federal government, we analyzed, crunched, and presented to the committee. So that included business closures, business closures by occupation... business closures by occupation, employment and unemployment by sector, as well as the number of businesses that declared bankruptcy formally or, or closed down. I think what I was trying to get to in my earlier comment was that, you know, we know how many businesses we lost. We know the number of employers that closed down and the number of employees that vanished overnight. You know, what we don't know at this point in time is sort of a sample of the fiscal health of the business community, because none of that's reported outside of closures.
I, I just have one quick follow-up too, and this was something that I was thinking of because it kind of applies to me personally. It, is this just for businesses located in Chelsea or is this for Chelsea residents who have businesses located elsewhere?
So technically, there's no restriction on using ARPA funding to assist Chelsea residents who may be starting businesses elsewhere. I think that's a policy decision that the city and city council has to make. Um, we've been approaching the small business category as how do we assist Chelsea-based small businesses as well as entrepreneurs who are residents that may want to start businesses?
So, so I mean, for, for instance, I, I employ a lot of Chelsea residents, but my office is in Boston. So, you know, it's, 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 I, I'm not sure like where, you know, where you draw the line. I mean, I, you know, uh, for some of these things, not for me, but for others that might be kind of in the same boat. Um, so anyway, that's, uh, thank you. Appreciate it.
Counsel Brown.
Is there any cross-checking mech- mechanism for someone to have a business in Chelsea or, or in his incident, um, where you have a business in Boston and you apply in Chelsea, you get, you know, 15,000 and you can also apply in Boston and get 20,000?
That's a good question. So we do cross-check for all of our programs, our pool of applicants against state, federal, and regional programs. So for instance, with our rental assistance program, we cross-referenced our local rental assistance pool with the state rental assistance pool. We did that too with the, uh, small business program that we ran, and that's a practice that we'll continue to employ.
So no further questions. We'll move on to the next one, which is, uh, priority, prioritized workforce development, and we'll read off the top so we can just see it real quick.
Just if I could offer that, these are strategies, and a lot of these questions have been very programmatic. Um, and think about this, that these will be prioritized by the committee and then the city staff will be implementing them. So there'll be an opportunity to do some of the directing that, uh, folks are adding here today. So I just want to make sure that we get, uh, get through these and you get a chance to really give us some input, but know that there'll be in the implementation of these yet another space to, um, add some of these comments. So just want to make sure you know you're gonna have more than one bite at the, at the apple today.
Thank you.
Okay.
So workforce development, take a moment, take a look through.
I'll read them off just for the case, not for only us, but also for those who are listening and watching us.
All right.
Uh, first, number one is increase workforce development for those most in need, the undocumented opportunities for youth. The second was provide subsidized training in critical areas, including the trades where employment is available in Chelsea and nearby, subsidizing these trainings with stipends, transportation, childcare options, and address cliff effects. Number three, foundational training in IT and cubi- computer skills, English as a second language, childcare, and entrepreneurship. Number four, access to high-speed, quality broadband internet at prices people can afford, access to computers. Number five, provide accessible, flexible English language classes, including industry-specific pathways, especially for youth. Number six, create a portal for Chelsea business oper- businesses' job opportunities. Number seven, engage businesses who commit to take on less experienced employees, such as apprenticeship, with incentives. And number eight, subsidies for public transit. Um, so do we have any questions on the, on all these titles? Yep?
Counsel Brown?
I'm fine with a lot of that. Um, one of my think, my thoughts was, and I had it with our city manager, is the telecommunication problem. I thought when we got hit with the COVID right from the beginning and six months in, when everyone had to go online, that a lot of our residents, businesses, and the schools where everyone had to go online to try to ke- keep up with what was going on, we were way behind. So I'm 100% in agreement with the broadband. I, I know the city manager states that, uh, it's a lot of work, but I think we need to really invest in this, um, wiring and cable and this internet service because again, uh, we, we learned a lot and we also lost a lot because a lot of folks didn't have that communication through the internet and because we have those little hotspots in Chelsea. So pretty much, um, I'm supportive of this one here, um, in full.
So, um, Alex, unless, uh, allow Counselor De Jesus first to ask questions.
Thank you, President. My question is for, um, in regards to funding, are we expanding on any of these training opportunities for existing programs that exist, uh, for, for programs that already exist, classes that already exist? Just keeping in mind that like, you know, to limit as much as possible overhead fees and recreating programs and all of that.
Yes, I think first and foremost, we want to build off of the civic infrastructure that we have currently. So anywhere that we can expand existing programs that are effective, that reach a large number of residents and that accomplish their mission, you know, we want to opt to divert resources to that as opposed to create new programs that could be, that could duplicate what's already out there.
Thank you.
So Alex, I think one of the concerns that, um, I've had, and I know I've shared this with, I think Counsel Robinson's also brought this up, is that, um, we have or we hear about workforce development and training, but what, what we're not getting and what we're not seeing by, um, m- metrics is the actual training in a particular skill or certificate. Um, the most common one is, we talk about is CDL license or something like that. So my question is, um, if this funding is going forward, what type of training are we going to look at and is there going to be a measurement, say, just, this is how many people have attained a certificate, this is how many people in the middle of getting a certificate and so forth? And how does, and, and also to follow up, what does number one look like in practice? What may, what is vision? Because I know it's a broad thing and what broke, and what come, but we still have to know, well, what is the preliminary vision of what that means when you say workforce development for the undocumented and for youth?
So to answer your, uh, your first question, um, so like, for instance, we recently up, crafted and submitted a proposal to the Economic Development Administration for a regional CDL training program that would benefit residents of East Boston, Revere, Chelsea, and Lynn. Um, so these types of resources through ARPA can allow us to both leverage larger pots of funding out there to enhance training as well as to sponsor targeted training programs, uh, in Chelsea or in the surrounding area. You know, there's a multitude of training programs out there currently for, for a number of sectors. One of the main barriers that we see our residents encountering is that they can't access them, they can't physically commute to them, um, or they're not sufficient for, for their needs. So we're looking to both address that access issue as much as possible, but also create new opportunities in technology, particularly like web development, coding, those types of sort of IT service sectors, uh, the construction trades, so carpentry, electric, HVAC, especially as we have this robust climate agenda where we want to decarbonize our residential and commercial buildings over the next 30 years. That's going to require a significant amount of electrical workers, you know, plumbers, HVAC specialists, and, and carpenters. I think lastly, you know, trades that are related to transportation and logistics are also of interest. You know, we have a geographic advantage in Chelsea where we have the Purdue Center and other transportation and warehousing companies that can employ, uh, residents at, at high wages. So we'd be looking at trainings in, in that, uh, realm as well. Uh, but in terms of performance metrics, I think absolutely, the performance metrics that you had, uh, you had referenced are, you know, plausible. They're ones that we collect for existing programs. Um, and we can also, you know, craft these to fit the program as, as we go. ARPA doesn't back you in to collect any particular metric, um, when it comes to program delivery. And then, uh, and then lastly, on, on number one, so increasing workforce development for those most in need, I think the committee's overarching goal with this was to allocate resources to provide workforce development opportunities for residents that have been traditionally excluded or marginalized from existing programs. So a good example of this are state programs. Many of the state programs right now, whether it's in biosciences, transportation, or the construction trades, are operated in suburban locations. Some of them have financial requirements, some of them, depending on their funding, even have immigration requirements. Uh, the committee's goal with this, based upon my understanding, was to create training opportunities that didn't have those barriers, that were local, that didn't have those immigration requirements, and particularly opportunities that cater to youth, since youth development is one of the other key focal areas of the, uh, the ARPA committee.
Counsel Brown, then Counselor De Jesus.
President, uh, I'll be quick. So have we did any reach, um, any kind of, um, work trying to reach out to the unions? Because you said about the construction. I know they have these printers, apprenticeships, um, with different types of unions, and sometime the hurdle here in Chelsea is one, the language and knowing when those classes are going to start, and secondly, the fee. Um, so I know if we, uh, I would assume if we try to reach out with them and let them know that Chelsea may have a pool of workers that, you know, will be able, if they need to just, first of all, be aware of the apprenticeships and the time, and also the city will be willing to help them with these fees and stuff.
Absolutely. So that, I think, is exemplified by one of our newer partnerships. So under a state grant called the Community Empowerment and Reinvestment Grant, um, we recently secured funding in partnership with La Collaborativa, the Chelsea Housing Authority, ROKA, um, as well as the Carpenter's Union and the Electrical Union to develop a pipeline for young adults in Chelsea who want to get into the electrical and carpentry trades in order to go on to careers in building management and maintenance. Um, so right now, we're working with ROKA to recruit, uh, for that program. This is kind of a pilot test run, if you will, and, you know, depending on our lessons learned, we hope we can scale this with additional resources. But those sort of application fees, for a lack of a better word, as well as the ability to geographically access the training centers-
Yeah.
-seem to be two areas where ARPA funds could be effectively used, um, to, to promote those opportunities.
Thank you.
Counselor De Jesus.
Uh, my, my question was similar. How are we working with unions and making sure that the youth are getting involved with the unions and job opportunities in that area? But Carpenter's Union is CEIU, um, so yeah, I think that's really important.
Absolutely.
Counselor Recupro. Counsel, pull the mic down, sir. Thank you. Pull it, so we can-
How many people will this help? What is the total amount that you're gonna help? 10, 20, 30, 50, 100?
So we actually don't know yet. We won't know until the committee develops their allocation plan. So the committee will have to lay out in this plan the exact amount of funding that they would propose allocating to each of these categories. So they could allocate $5 million to workforce development, or they could allocate, you know, $1 million. That'll determine how many people we can help. So right now, we're hoping to work with counsel, the committee members, as well as the public to rank the priorities, so the committee can be informed in their decision-making about where to allocate funds and at what level to allocate funds.
And how would they go about getting these? Like, if somebody wants to apply, does he go to your office? How do they, what is the procedure to be able to get this?
Earlier, they said that the program has not been set yet. These are broad strokes right now, so that has not been determined yet.
Okay.
Any other further questions on this section? Just so that I can allow my colleagues to feel, uh, a little bit of ease, um, I plan on continuing this meeting. Um, we still have, uh, four sections ago. I figure we're gonna have, go, be able to finish one more, and that'll leave us at 50%, and we'll have another meeting. Um, the ARPA committee has been meeting for months to be able to hash this all out. Um, it would have been unfair for this counsel to delve into this and just try to look at this one, uh, within one hour or 55 minutes. So, uh, feel free to just, uh, go through this next section, the housing, and, uh, but we will be continuing this at some future city council meeting prior to similar to this.
Great. Um, one that I think folks will, uh, appreciate is, there's quite a bit of emphasis on housing. The process of, uh, of informing the committee included looking at historic, um, sources of housing in the city, looked at the information about current housing, housing availability, affordability. We also met directly with residents in, and the leaders from the, um, public housing. We had quite a bit of, uh, comment from the public in community meetings, as well as at the public meeting about housing, and obviously great discussion at the, uh, committee space. And so these are the, uh, priorities as they came for housing, and I, I think, uh, there's many, uh, things that we could be talking about here. I'm gonna ask you, if you have suggestions about these, please give those to us as suggestions, because a lot of these, the questions you've asked have been great questions, but they're also really informative suggestions. So just please feel free to say, hey, could we? And, and let's add that as a suggestion. Okay?
Okay. So I'll read them off. The number one is increase equitable housing opportunities based on residents' needs, including affordable housing, public-private partnerships, and workforce middle income at, and 80 to 100% AMI housing. Number two, increasing new construction of affordable housing, mixed-income housing, new sustainable models. Number three, make investments that leverage multiple additional resources to expand capacity for housing stability services, including support for resident rental arerage, arerage. There you go. That means back rent, folks, for those who don't know. Uh, temporary housing and emergency housing. Number five, support housing stability initiatives and programs such as the Chelsea Eviction Task Force. Number six, increase redevelopment and rehabilitation of available housing stock to create healthy, comfortable homes. Number seven, homeownership program for current residents, including rent-to-own opportunities, interest rate subsidies, and down payment assistance. Number eight, increase rent, I'm sorry, rather, support rent increase mitigation, rent control, longer-term rental assistance, incentives for landlords not to not raise rents. Number nine, housing voucher and other supports for people already in apartments housing insecure. And number 10, create housing specifically for civil servants and community-based organizational staff to live in the city. So at this time, I'll ask, um, well, we're gonna have about 10, 10 minutes, not even, five minutes, basically, um, to, if we have a quick question from anyone, and we'll, again, we'll continue this, but does anyone have any questions? First one gets the first question. No? Counselor Garcia, then Counselor De Jesus.
Your contact information. Do you have it on the slide, or how can we contact you in case, Mo, you?
I would give you my card.
Okay.
All right. Um, I figure that we only have a few minutes to give our staff to get ready for the city council meeting, so, uh, we will continue this, and I'll work with the city manager and Alex to set the next meeting so that we can have a similar, uh, subcommittee meeting prior to our next city council meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.